To do.
She does, but if you want to override that, I mean, I'll be glad to stay.
Nah, I'm good.
Oh, I just have one thing tonight, I'll be asking for a resolution to hire, uh, hire my man by time for him to get back to work. He's, he's a twenty-five-year veteran that just retired on us and he's wanting to come back to work part-time and we are ready for him to come back. So, Mr. Rocky Mams is part-time deputy sheriff.
Alright, good deal. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good night.
It's my choice. You are dismissed. Uh, and the appropriate judge asked me to remove the elections, uh, till we hold it to the next meeting. And next we have the commission office, Ms. Sylvia Singleton.
Um, first of all, I had, uh, laid some paperwork up there. Is that, um, I didn't know if you had a chance to see what it was. I didn't know if that was gonna be on the agenda or not. Yes, sir.
Should be.
Yes, yes. It'll be on, both be, it'll, I'm, I'll add that under me when we get down to it.
Okay, alright. I just want to make sure that I didn't need to put it under mine.
My mistake.
Um, of course, um, first of all, the Alabama Power Eastment Agreement. And Commissioner Williams, you may have to help me explain a little bit about that. Uh, I know that, that some of you have already discussed this.
Uh, Commissioner Childers, can, he's got intimate knowledge of what's going on out there, but what it amounts to is engineer failed to survey or do due diligence and power company has got five poles, five poles that they've got to move back off the right of way so we can have a road to get into our new courthouse. And that's what this Eastment Agreement will be for. Now, Commissioner Childers, do you'd like to add anything to that?
That's, that's the sum of it. We, uh, uh, it may, I don't want anybody to panic, but it may be a bit before they move it. Uh, we also, they're also having to work with AT&T. They've got some copper lines down there. The, uh, so we might be delayed in, you know, a couple of weeks and getting to move, so we'll, we'll see.
Okay.
Depends on the weather and all this other stuff, but yeah, they, uh, that, that's, it's for the, uh, decel and the, and the
Entrance.
It's for the entrance. There you go. Thank you.
Alright, great. Well, we'll leave it, we'll leave it as is then.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the, tomorrow night will be the last meeting for the nominations for the Chilton-Clanton Library Board. We have one nominee so far, so we'll be asking for an additional nominee, uh, and then to close and nominate. Um, the same for the DHR Board, uh, last, this is the third meeting. We have one so far, so there again, um, if there are any nominations, we'll then close and nominate. Central access quote, um, this is actually for the road department. Um, when we move, they'll no longer be able to use, they won't be able to use our services here. So, we need to get them something set up before we actually leave the building and turn all of this off. Uh, this is two ninety-nine and some change a month, um, and they need to, this was actually brought to us, uh, several, a month ago maybe, or no, several months ago. Uh, but didn't realize they needed to take action on it so quickly.
Okay.
Uh, the last thing is about an excess bid, and I've talked to a couple of you about this, but, uh, we've been named in a suit. We are, we are at, at all. Um, it was actually against another, uh, uh, a point, uh, voted on, uh, person, and we were named. Our insurance attorney that handles this has, uh, suggested that we take funds that are set aside for this particular, uh, group of people that think they all are entitled to it. And, um, give a check to the Chilton County Circuit Clerk. And it's, it's for us to interplead the excess funds. In other words, we'll just take the money and give it to the circuit clerk, remove our names from the, the case. And, um, when they, when they do get out in court, they'll decide who gets the money. And we'll be, we won't be in the court doing that. Uh, I would think that that would satisfy our insurance company. Um, and also stop the, uh, time that we were on this insurance, that the attorneys were on our, being paid by our insurance.
We would've had to pay the money out one way or the other because we're holding the money in like escrow until it's settled.
That's a way of looking at it, yes.
So now, we're not in the lawsuit. They can handle it and they're gonna get the money one way or the other. Somebody is.
That is what we're, we're hoping to do, but, uh, I'm leaving it on the regular agenda because, uh, Ben, uh, will be able to address it if we have any questions about it.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Transit, Kiantay Dejarnet.
Good evening, Commissioner. Um, got a resolution to hire, uh, M. Reagan, Real Property Services LLC, uh, to conduct a property appraisal for the proposed location that we're moving to, which would be the tag office. Uh, this gives us the ability, we have an eighty-twenty split with the state, uh, but if we're gonna claim eighty percent of that money back, we have to go through the due diligence of getting the property appraised and, uh, turning in that documentation to the state.
You just took my question away from it.
That way, the state don't feel like we're being overcharged for the new property that we'll be moving into.
Okay.
No, sir, they're not. Uh, pretty much everybody that I contacted local, uh, referred me to someone else. Uh, they said that they were tied up and busy and could not get out and do it. Uh, one of the local members that I called gave me a contact to this guy and another fella. Uh, so these are the only two people, the two bids, if y'all have the booklet, uh, that I printed off, uh, we had the two bids that came in. And, uh, one was extremely high and another one was more along line of our budgets that we can have. Uh, so we just taking a look at those and deciding on which way we want to go with that.
Okay. Any questions? Alright.
Alright. Uh, we have a resolution to begin, uh, offering advertisement. Uh, I have the advertisement packet or the contract, uh, attached to the files for you guys to take a look at. Uh, this is taken off like wildfire. We got a lot of people that are very interested in putting their advertisement on the back of our transit buses. Uh, so it's just, uh, me doing my due diligence, so letting you take a look at the contracts, uh, that were drawn up. Uh, and along with the appraisal, as well as the advertisement contracts have both been approved by the state of Alabama, so we okay to go. But I can't move until the commission tells me to do so.
So, um, Kiantay, if, can you adjust the, the price of, of the advertisement, or do you have to get that approved out of Montgomery?
I have to get that approved out of Montgomery, but I am, uh, I am able to fluctuate in certain areas as long as I stay under a certain dollar amount.
I see.
Uh, I can fluctuate in that spot, uh, but the way, and I don't mind sharing this with y'all, we have multiple areas that we can advertise on the bus. So, the price that you're looking at is simply for a panel or a section on the bus. Uh, so that's why the prices are not astronomical high. And then two, I've been doing business and worked in Chilton County in sales for a long time. If you come out very aggressive, people tend to shy away. Uh, but if you come to where it's more reasonable, uh, you have more people that are willing to play and pay as well to be a part of the service that you offer.
What kind of price you call reasonable?
Uh, well, you got your advertisement price that's on the back for a whole year. Uh, you can advertise in that certain section for a thousand dollars for a whole year.
That's where I was kinda getting at. It was, uh, six months was five hundred dollars. I was just thinking if you could, uh, up that to six hundred, it'd be a, you know, it'd be a savings and incentive to, for them to take out a whole year.
It would be, but, uh, just kinda what you say, uh, now that you kinda understand my fan, what I'm dealing with, you have more than one section that you can actually capitalize on. Uh, so therefore, if somebody would like to say, hey, let me get this section of the bus as well as another section along the sides, that's kinda more of an agenda.
Understand. I got you.
That you can kinda push that way.
That makes sense.
Per bus or they get all the buses?
Sir?
Is it per bus?
It is per bus. It is per bus, or per, per section on the bus. Uh, I have two buses that I cannot rent out or advertise on until March the first of twenty-twenty-six due to the previous contract that the, uh, director put us under where we were with Infinity, uh, advertising. Uh, bus twenty-five and twenty-six, I can't do anything on until March first of twenty-twenty-six.
Alright, any other com- comments or questions?
That is a good idea.
I like it. I mean, this puts it in-house. Where we were third party last time, losing seventy percent of it.
Yeah, for those that don't know, the last contract that we were under, uh, it was a seventy-thirty split, seventy percent going to the advertising company and thirty percent coming, uh, to Chilton County Commission. That's not good business, uh, and it was not transparent as well. So, we don't know what they sold the advertisement for. We don't know anything. All we did was just receive a check in the mail and no abbreviation, no nothing, no stating of what, what was made and what the advertisement was sold for. So, this, we can properly control, uh, and we can see what we're putting on the bus and we can also see the revenue come in at a hundred percent compared to seventy-thirty split.
Good job.
And then also, I would like to talk to the commissioners about, uh, the remodel of the, the change if we go to the tag office. Um, just a part of getting the ball rolling. Uh, like I said, I like to be proactive instead of reactive, uh, in dealing with business. Um, that way, if we need to go ahead and start collecting bids, I just need to know which way the commission would like me to go.
Do we have a floor plan designed yet? We need some kind of a plan before we?
That's what I'm, I'm asking permission if I can go ahead and start getting with certain people and talking with them to see kinda what, uh, price around about may be. Some people are willing to come in and just say, hey, it may cost you this, it may cost you that, uh, but that's technically not a bid. That's just basically hearsay. They may come in and say, we'll do it for X amount of dollars, and then if we start going with the work, it may triple in that amount. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that we, we're okay with.
I think, uh, for myself, I'd like to see a floor plan, some kind of floor plan design, what, what we're actually gonna be paying for, what we're gonna be looking at. And, uh, not thinking you ain't capable of doing that. I'd just like to see what we're gonna be paying for over there. So, you know, uh, you could take it just a piece of graph paper. Like I sketch out rooms and just, you know, you got the dimensions and sketch it out, everything it ought to look like.
I got you.
And, uh, that, that's just my thoughts of it.
I agree. I mean, I, you, you know your business better than anybody, so sketch out what you want and then, uh, get two or three quotes necessarily bids. And then come back to us and, and, uh, I don't know what, uh, we'll need to entertain the city with zoning or anything like that, or, uh.
Uh, we'd probably need to, maybe you're gonna get Gene and, uh, get with Gene or, uh.
David, David Askew across the street there will help you. He'll call that.
Yeah, he, he'll keep us in line.
Got you.
Or between the lines, whatever you wanna call it.
I got you. Any more questions?
Any other comments or questions for Kiantay?
Thank y'all and happy Thanksgiving.
Very good. Happy Thanksgiving, Kiantay. Okay, uh, Parking Rec, Donald's House.
I just got one thing. I just need a resolution to remove Calvin Smithman from payroll effective November the ninth.
Alright, any questions for Donald? Alright, thank you, sir. Uh, Animal Control, Christina.
I just need, um, a resolution, uh, for a new hire for Tara Green as a full-time animal care specialist, and I believe that's effective the twenty-sixth.
Alright. Any comments or questions? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. She doesn't sit down. It's too late for that.
Yeah, I was a little bit behind the ball on that one. Okay, Nick Bowden? Don't get, don't sit down. Let this miss you, okay?
Good evening, good evening, Commissioner. Uh, so I'm here. Uh, it's been a couple of years hard work on this, um, and finally something just went our way on it, but, um, we're gonna need two resolutions. One, to establish the county, uh, it'll be a tech, technical rescue and hazmat response unit. Uh, and then also a resolution to, uh, purchase a vehicle for that team if the team is established. Um, and you guys have a, the proposal I sent, if y'all've got any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
Was, was whatever you're doing, is it budgeted for this year?
Um, no. Uh, so, part of the, part of the hard work that's going on is, is, is failure mostly on, on stuff falling out before the budget. I tried to get it in the budget, but it just didn't work out in time. Um, a lot of the stuff that was in the proposal for training and equipment, we're looking that if it does go forward to secure it with grant funds or, uh, donations from the fire departments that are gonna be, uh, partnering on this with us. So, and some of it we already have. It's just the, but specifically the, the vehicle, the truck, uh, it is not budgeted, no.
Nick, I would like you to explain exactly like you told me on the phone the other day about the response team, how it's coordinated with the fire departments, how it's selected, put together. Cause in all honesty, this is a very beneficial program. Um, I understand that the truck, uh, issue was, it was extremely highly priced when you went to get it and you knew that you couldn't get it for that. Well, then now they've reduced the price by fifty percent. This is a used vehicle. Um, a new one like this is two hundred plus thousand dollars. This is, we're talking about fifteen grand. So, to, to get this enacted and then he's, he has a plan for it. So, I'd like you to just kinda embellish a little bit on how this operates and how it's coordinated with the fire departments and stuff.
And along with that, Nick, if you would, um, uh, the grants associated with training, the department, like you explained to me, that'd be beneficial. Thank you.
So, one of EMA's task is hazardous response in Chilton County, and that, that's a big one for us. Um, with sixty-five running through here, three exits, uh, two railways, three, two railways, uh, and there's several companies that have hazardous materials in this county. So, if there's any kind of leak, spill, any of that stuff, um, outside of the fire departments, they're calling us for logistical support to handle those things. Um, and so we, we being the three of us that are here, uh, with EMA are the ones who are tasked with either helping them at the fire departments, whatever issue they have, or mitigating it altogether. Um, most of the time, uh, on sixty-five, if there is some kind of a spill or, or leak, uh, the city of Clanton usually just calls us and then we work with them. Um, and so what the plan is for this is not just for, for my three guys to run this thing solely. It's, it's gonna get support from, uh, the municipalities and their fire departments, and then also the volunteer fire departments out in the county. Um, we're hoping to pull some of them in. Every, just about every department has somebody that's qualified with hazmat tech stuff to be on this team. Um, but it's part, the other part of it is the tech rescue, and there's, there are plenty of guys out there too in the, in the fire departments that have these certifications or that they wanna get them. Um, and so we've got the hazmat stuff that would just help with EMA. It would pull some load off of us, cause there's only three of us. Uh, and, and any hazmat scene, if it's, if it's small, yeah, three people can handle it. If it's big, um, you can be overwhelmed extremely quick, uh, with, with as far as what, what happens and how you're supposed to do it the safe way. Uh, but the tech rescue stuff currently right now, we don't have anything, um, other than some of the municipalities. I know the city of Clanton has some rope stuff. Um, doors being mowed, which all the fire departments have rope, but as far as having the proper equipment to do stuff the, the correct way, the safe way, nobody's really equipped like they should be in this county. Um, and so this would kinda be an all-hands thing coming together. Uh, EMA would basically do our job now and just kinda be the behind-the-scenes guy, getting it all together and putting people in the right places and letting them run it. Um, so we'd tech, tech rescue, hazmat, and that would be like rope rescue, water rescue. Uh, we probably wanna shy away from dive. Dive is usually incorporated in this, but diving is really dangerous. Um, it's extremely dangerous. We had a dive team there. I don't know if you remember that one.
I was part of the dive team.
You know how dangerous it is, like, yes. There's more things that can kill you underwater and being in a fire.
Actually started it back in the day.
Well, hey, you might wanna jump back on it.
Nah.
Dive is extremely dangerous. I'm not saying we won't go there, but there's a lot of stuff that has to get in with dive and it may just be over our head for this one. Uh, especially when we have teams that are pretty close to us that are well on their way and capable of handling it. Um, but, you know, swift water, um, rope, trench, uh, confined space, there's all kinds of situations that are out there that, that we can help these, these volunteer fire departments, uh, be better equipped to handle it. And so grant funds come in on this where, um, for training, for equipment, um, for vehicles, uh, you can get either matching or reimbursement grants. A lot of the big ones are matching grants. Um, for these, for these type of teams, but there are some smaller ones, uh, and when I say smaller, we're talking like less than a hundred thousand dollars that are usually reimbursements. Um, and we, we usually get those grants, uh, every so often. We, we do our good work and we get a couple of those, uh, for, for certain things anyway. So, we're, we're familiar with those smaller grants. The bigger ones, I haven't done too many of, but we have a pretty good grant writer in the county. She's very, she's very good. Um, so there's grants out there for this, uh, that would help fund it. And then even in the meantime, we have equipment now with EMA. Um, not everything we need, but we have some. Uh, and then I'm hoping that when we talk to some of these fire departments, maybe they have some equipment that might be getting outdated that they could donate, and then we could help them get a grant to get new stuff at their fire department. So, it would benefit them also if they jump on with some of this stuff. They could get new stuff and it would, you know, and all, obviously their personnel would be getting trained as well in some of these certifications to go back and then, and use within their department aside from this team. Um, I mean, I think I might've hit everything.
You didn't mention gas pipelines.
Yeah, thank you.
We do have gas pipelines. That's true. Yeah.
Two or three meetings I was at in the past five years, pipelines, that was one question to ask each commission or each representative of the counties, your hazmat response team. I think I might've come back to you and asked you about that a few years ago because at first I'd heard of it. So, yeah.
Yeah, it, so that, that has picked up big in Alabama since about twenty-seventeen. Um, I've been a part of just about everyone in Alabama that you've seen on the news.
Yeah, we've got one running north to south and one running east to west across the entire stretch.
And then Williams. Yeah, so we've got, we've got petroleum and we've got natural gas and just running in pipelines. So, those are big, big deals. Yeah.
This is beneficial. I appreciate Roger getting you to explain that. That's a big deal. Uh, any other questions or comments?
I, I just wanna, um, say in, in the funding and sustainability, well, uh, the county support, county commission funding allocations, so what, how does that work? What, what are your expectations from us?
Really, right now, that was the second part of the resolution that I'm, or the second resolution that I'm needing is, is the fifteen thousand to purchase the vehicle, uh, that I found. Um, and because it's not budgeted. We tried to get it in the budget, but the, the, the price just wasn't right at the time. We passed our budget. Um.
And I would say in his defense, he did try that, but it wouldn't meet the budget, so that's why he's coming back.
Um, and just like Commissioner Perkins said, just, just for an idea, this, this vehicle that I'm looking at is fifteen thousand. It is used. It's a, I wanna say mid-nineties, uh, vehicle, but I'm very familiar with it. It hasn't been used harshly. It's a good truck. Um, it hasn't had the hours of the miles that some other trucks might've had in some of these bigger cities. Um, and I looked up a couple of prices and most of these are used, but an O-seven model, heavy rescue, uh, which is a, a really nice one. This is a, uh, not a commercial cab. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's used, two thousand and seven, twenty years old. Uh, a two thousand and seven commercial heavy is a hundred thousand. A brand-new twenty-five is four twenty-five. And then just for comparison, a twenty-five brand-new F-four-fifty, which they call a light rescue, is a hundred and seventy-two. So, and we're looking at fifteen.
What year is this one?
Ninety-nine, I think.
Yeah, mid-nineties, I wanna say. I'm not exactly sure. Well, it's a, it's, it's an international, I wanna say.
Seven-three.
Seven-three. It's gonna have the spoiler good in. And this, Commissioner Hall talking about the money, we have the money and fund balance for the truck.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. We, we'd have to pull it. It's not in my budget. It's not in my budget.
Right.
So, that would be what the commissions.
Okay, okay.
And then if we did do grants, if there was a matching, the commission would have to match it.
As far as operational standup, sustainability, it will be budgeted on EMA later.
But he couldn't, but he couldn't.
He can afford to operate it. We just missed the budget by the truck.
Now, I will tell you, these pipelines, you can ask them and they're very generous.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we've got some grant money from Williams before.
Yeah, and, uh, plantation.
Always willing to work out.
Yeah, uh, Sheriff, you got the guy's name, Plantation, don't you? Yeah, so we got the contacts there and they are very generous with us. They have been. Let me rephrase that.
How about, and they're gonna be a little generous on some of those things too.
That's a lot of partnership, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Alright, anything else from Nick? Alright, thank you, Nick. You can sit down. Okay, Road Department, Heath Sexton.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, share my excitement that the two-mile segment of Canal Road Thirty, uh, the crews worked hard and we were able to put down a chip seal on it today. Uh, also wanna share my appreciation for the Road Department employees who even when I left for the meeting, were still, uh, uh, out finishing up the job. So, I appreciate them working to get the job done. Uh, I know a lot of people are excited about the road being widened and reconstructed, so, um, moving on, I have three items tonight. Uh, the first item, uh, is a position fill request, uh, for Demetrius Parker for the Equipment Operator Two, Truck Driver Four position, effective December first. So, I'll ask for approval to, uh, to fill the position with Mr. Parker. Next is Mr., uh, request a position fill for Mr. Mason Owesley, uh, as a road worker, uh, effective December first, twenty-twenty-five, um, as shown in the attachment. And, uh, lastly, uh, we passed a resolution for our dump truck, um, rotation program, which included, um, uh, advertising for a, uh, lease purchase financing agreement for the eight new dump trucks. And so I would ask, uh, approval to, to go ahead and advertise that when the, when the right time comes. And that's all I have.
Alright, any questions for you?
Nah, I wanna clarify, Canal Road Thirty will extend the entire. It's just got stopped by a little bit by the weather. That section's done. The next section's coming, the rest of Thirty.
That's right. It's in the, in the, in the budget, so we'll be moving on as the weather.
Make sure we know. We know exactly what Thirty means, all of Thirty. So, just letting you know.
Okay.
Before anything gets posted somewhere.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Biddingsley.
Yes, I'll be asking for a resolution to fund some money to the rescue squad whenever budgeting time came this past year or this year, whichever way, gonna be past year really. Uh, they got a little confused about turning in their request, uh, and they only requested forty-eight hundred dollars for the whole year.
Alright, anything else?
No, sir, not at this time.
Alright, Commissioner Bone?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Childers?
Uh, I, I don't. Hope to have some pretty good news next, uh, next, uh, meeting for the Animal Control. But I do, I would like to move, uh, from the consent agenda, the Road Department, uh.
It's done.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Henry?
Um, yeah, I, I think we've had a, maybe having a few issues with the Road Department. I just, uh, I'm gonna be bringing a resolution up tomor- uh, tomorrow night to, uh, try to straighten some of them issues out. Be sure who's, who's running the Road Department, uh, if the commission's running or if the engineer's running it or somebody else is running it, you know? I think there's a little confusion about that, and I think it needs to be straightened out. So, I'll, I'll have a resolution tomorrow night to try to straighten that out and see what we can do. And I think it needs to be straightened out. So I'll, I'll have a resolution tomorrow night to try to straighten that out and see what we can do.
All right, anybody got any questions? Commissioner Headley? All right, nobody's got any comments or questions? Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, thank you. I will, um, on, on some occasions, everybody knows that we, um, began the, uh, general store up at Manuka and, uh, it's stocked and open and, and, uh, running really well. On, uh, we try to, uh, we try to stay away from food that has expiration dates, but it's near impossible to do that all the time. I mean, everything's got an expiration date at one time or another. So, um, having said that, I'm gonna ask for a resolution to allow the, um, allow us to donate any of the expired food or expiring food to, uh, local food banks. I just needed to ask that as the commission, um, hope that nobody has an issue with that. Um, and then on the, uh, discount program, we're gonna ask for a amendment to the operation manual to, uh, change our discount program. We initially came out with that discount program, uh, very aggressive for the first year that we, we took office and did a lot of changeovers to increase, uh, the foot traffic there. Uh, and we were wanting to change that back after a period of a year to, uh, match it more closely to some of the state parks. So the, uh, language would end up changing in the operations manual, uh, from the twenty-five percent discount back to a fifteen percent discount to make it more, uh, uniform across, across most parks. And the discount, of course, only applies to overnight stays and is not combined with any other discount. So that would be my, uh, resolution there to change the discount, uh, percentage.
Okay.
And then, uh, short, uh, Manuka Lake update for everybody. Um, uh, the cover was, you know, installed, which basically means we sunk a bunch of pine trees that was donated in it, um, to establish some fish habitat, uh, to give them some better cover for some things we're doing. Um, the blue gill, which essentially is real small, uh, one and a half, two inch blue gill that will be introduced as bait fish, uh, where the lake was void of any kind of bait, uh, will be in next couple of weeks. And then, uh, last week, I guess it was, uh, we were able to, uh, have the catfish were delivered. So catfish, uh, were delivered. They weighed between one pound and maybe three and a half, four pounds each. Uh, so they're ready to catch, we're willing on them, it's five a person, so anybody wants to go catfishing up there, they, we have catfish in there now. So, uh, one good thing about it, one interesting, um, uh, a lot of the schools had a program, had a lot of, um, I guess field trips were going on over the last couple of weeks. We've had over three hundred students in the county have been through Manuka. I think it was through the extension, Lucy and him was up there. Um, it was a, it was a huge, huge deal. And the last group there happened to be there when the catfish were delivered, so they got to all watch that. So it was pretty, it was pretty exciting for the, for the kids to, to see. So there's a lot of exciting things going on up there, um, at, at Manuka, so I invite everybody out there to see it. So that's, that's all I have.
I have a question. Who's, who's running this? Now, you've been the commissioner. Who, are you running this part of it? All of this? Are we got a person that runs? I'm confused. All of this? Because you, you speak to it, but I wanna, I just want clarity. Who run, are you as the commissioner running the park or is he? I, I just want, I just want, I need clarity. Because when I, when I was on the, um, animal, cause I never was allowed any privileges to assist or recommend to these, to, to assist the, uh, director. So is he running it? So just, just make it make sense to me.
Well, the director is hired by the commission to run the park system.
Okay.
Right? So he coordinates with the liaisons to the park system.
Okay.
So that's kinda how that, that works.
Thank you.
All right, you wanna give a shout out to the person who donated all those trees that y'all slunk up there for the habitat?
Well, yeah, I mean, I can. Um, Porish Pines donated all his coals, uh, over a period of time, the ones that was dead or crooked or something like that, whatever he decided to cut and he cut them up and piled them up. And we went up there and got them and then Donald row boated us out there and sunk them. He, he had a trolling motor, but I would, I would not, um.
That's a story for a different time.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, brings it down to me. Uh, personnel matters, but that is not matured yet, so I'm gonna skip over that tonight. And I'm gonna come right down to a resolution that each of you have that, I think I can say we're all excited to make this announcement tonight. Uh, five years ago, I may had my first meeting with an, an ambulance company. Only one of three ambulance companies that would return my phone call back then as a rookie county commissioner. And now five years later, we're coming to the county asking to accept a resolution for an agreement with an ambulance, uh, service with RPS and Chilton County. Uh, but before I get into that a little bit more, two people who were very instrumental in this were Commissioner Butch Billingsley and Sheriff John Sharon. I had asked those two to serve with me on, on the committee because of their expertise. John in emergency outside of the realm of ambulance or fire department. And Butch because of his nearly half a century working with rescue and ambulance service. And I think between the two of them, they've got us to the point where we are right now with an agreement, uh, to be presented to the commission tomorrow night to vote on. So, uh, with that being said, is there any questions or comments from any of the other commission?
And this resolution will be explained?
How much money it's gonna save?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know about how much. I'd like to hear about what it's gonna cost us, um, a little of those things. You know, per ambulance or per year or.
You wanna make that happen tomorrow night or you wanna do it tonight?
No, we can do this night. Butch, I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Billingsley take the lead on that.
It'll be a two-year contract and, uh, subsidy would be per year. And it's, uh, two hundred and twelve thousand, some few cents, am I correct? Oh, they saved us. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, we done, we done made money. So, that's. So that's a per year. We'll be having three ambulances in Chilton County. And they'll either be staffed with events, EMTs, or paramedics. And you've got, uh, BLS and ALS ambulances, the people who's in the service or understands that. And we will have a one-day truck, Monday through Friday, and it'll be ten hours a day. That'll be sta- established with a paramedic. That day truck, I think, is gonna really save us some time. It'll be for one person. What people don't realize in Chilton County, we get numerous calls. I stumped my toe night before last and I need an ambulance go the emergency room. That's two days ago. I've been sick for a week. This day truck person can advance and go to this scene and establish where they can wait till we get an ambulance and gets available that can do this, or else they can get someone to take them to the ER. That's gonna save tying up a truck, cause if you tie up one of their trucks and say they go out to UAB St. Vincent's, that could be a short time, an hour, maybe a little over. But if they have to go to Alabaster or UAB or Grandview, you're talking about three plus hours that's in this county. Now, and that's a lot of time to be having to wait for an ambulance in this county. Uh, cause they can get Grandview or they can get UAB or they can get Alabaster and then get hung there. Delayed, proper wording, which is waiting on the wall is what everybody calls it. Now, the, uh, RPS has got some fantastic teams. I can personally contest to that because I had to be transferred Friday.
And texting the whole time he was being transferred, I can add.
The, the day truck, is it one of the three you're talking about?
No, sir. That's a four.
So it's four chase truck. Three ambulances and then the day truck.
And the one day truck. That is correct. Hopefully in the future, we can talk about a two-day truck on there. Uh, so, like Commissioner Williams said, I look back and I found text and I found paperwork where I was working on this six years ago. And when I say I, we were had a, at that time, we had, uh, uh, people working on it from the fire departments and from nine-one-one. And we got a little one-page agreement with them, which really was nothing to it, I'll just tell you now. But with this one that we have here, I feel like we've got real close to what we want. There's some things that we didn't get that I wanted, but, you know, you gotta negotiate and you gotta give to receive. And that's the way I feel and I'm comfortable with that. I've talked to the personnel at RPS, several of them. Uh, it's been really great working with them and asking them a question and them giving me an answer and me, and them asking me a question and I can give them an answer. So the attorneys have looked at this, that you all know, that, but the public will know. Everything is now in writing. It's in black and white. So with this resolution tomorrow night, I'll be asking for the permission to give the chairman of the commission the authority to sign this agreement. The way that I read the agreement, as soon as it is signed by both parties, it's gonna be effective. Uh, and RPS is already set up in this county and it will take them a little bit adjusting to get what we're at, what this agreement says. So I think I've covered everything. Any other questions?
I, I think maybe a little later on too, there's gonna be a, and I, I ain't read this, cause I didn't get it till today. Uh, I got an email, but I couldn't, I couldn't get the attachment open. And then when I did get it to open, it wanted to charge me for some kind of program to read it. I'm not paying to read it. So, anyway. But, uh, 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 if there's any grants down the road that comes down to the county, they come to the county or they go to RPS or is that in here?
Uh, no, if it's a RPS grant, it's theirs. If we apply for a grant, it'll be ours, but that has nothing to do with this contract.
Grant and there, so.
No.
Got you.
If you don't mind, can we also, uh, uh, amend the budget to, uh, change, change the transfers to accommodate this?
Yes, ma'am. If you'd like those mentioned in the motion, we can put that in there for tomorrow night. So we do that correctly.
Well, I guess we do it as one or we have to do it as two?
Two.
Two, okay.
Have y'all got any ideas?
I'll do the money first before the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, they. Contract, this is.
You'll have to do two resolutions, ain't ya?
No.
We have, we have sales tax money that goes for infrastructure, uh, uh, public safety and.
So it's coming out.
Industrial development.
It's coming out of general fund then, more or less.
We're gonna reduce the amount that goes to industrial development.
Okay.
Because it's still, it's still public safety. We're just increasing the public safety.
Yeah, y'all can, every how y'all want it for the budget terms, we'll do that. Uh, and one other thing I wanna say about this. This committee was put in place a year and a week ago. We decided initially, we're not gonna throw something against the wall and see what sticks. I know a lot of people have been frustrated because it's been taking so long. But one of the reasons it's taken so long is we were doing every bit of due diligence we could do to make sure that when we brought something to this commission, it was gonna be something acceptable and something that could be voted on and something that would work for the people in Chilton County. So if you wanna hit anybody over the head for taking so long, it's me, because I'm pretty stubborn when it comes to holding things out to a plan. So the plan.
Well, you know, it, it really took us longer than that, cause the previous commission worked on it about two years before this had changed over. And then, so, you know, it's, it, there's a lot of work went into it, a whole lot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I would like to add that, um, how proud I am of this commission body and the corporate work that has been done by each of us, either behind the scenes or by the committee. And getting this to the table where we're twenty-four hours away from possibly having the, bringing the vote to have an ambulance company that is dedicated to this county. And it was worked out in such a manner that there was nothing extra added to the taxpayer. So we, we have, we have, as a body, we, and that committee that was put together by the chairman, has been able to successfully negotiate this in such a manner that I feel like it sets Chilton County apart from a lot of other counties and will create a model that they can follow. And I just wanna commend them for that and tell them how, how proud I am of that. There was a lot of behind the scenes work goes on by every one of us. The, the questions that other commissioners brought forward and got to the committee and other organizations and then other people in the, uh, citizens in the county coming with questions that, that they might not have thought of, that they could go back and negotiate with. So I just, uh, I applaud them for that. It has been a long time coming and I'm, I'm glad to see it.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I have got one other question. It is, when we say the ambulance is for the county, does that, does that consist of the cities of Mapleville, Jimson, Thor's, been playing too, or is that just outside?
Not, not Clan.
Clan has their own.
Clan has their own contract with RPS.
What, what we mean is. Yeah, a dedicated ambulance service to the county. So that, that we can have, have coverage here and reduce those response times. And I think, I think they've done a wonderful job in this contract.
All right, anything else? All right, well, I'll adjourn this work session until tomorrow.